Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. Welcome to the City Council meeting for this April 20th special, special City Council meeting of April 27th, excuse me, April 27th. And, um, Madam Clerk, would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Papin?
Here.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Here.
Mayor Gothols?
Here. Uh, so due to the physical distancing protocols that are still in place, we continue to encourage public participation remotely. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of the published agenda. There are two ways to participate. E comments can be provided through the website Public Meetings Portal. Can I ask you guys to mute your microphones if, if you can? Um, getting a little bit of feedback. So e comments can be provided through the website, uh, Public Meetings Portal at www.cityofsamatero.org using the Speak Up San Mateo button. Phone-in participation can be done by calling 951-405-2956 with the conference ID number 697-407-69-pound. Again, that information is published on the agenda. These numbers are noted, um, these options for public comment will remain available until the close of the public comment period, uh, for that specific item. One more way that you can participate, and this is new, is that when calling in on an item, please write to clerk, C-L-E-R-K, at cityofsamatero.org with your name and what item you want to comment on. Uh, we have changed the system so that your phone number can be kept, uh, private, anonymity for your phone number. Um, this is a special City Council meeting, so public comment will be offered during the consideration of each item. With that having been said, let's get started with old business, starting with number one, a COVID update from our City Manager Drew Corbin.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is everyone able to see my slides?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll get started with this week's COVID-19 update. Um, so just operationally, as you're aware, last week, uh, the health officer issued a new order, um, that required that face masks be worn in public, and it was enforceable as of last Wednesday. Our primary focus has been on education before enforcement. Uh, we do have a complaint hotline setup and enforcement, and an enforcement protocol established, um, with code enforcement and the police department. Um, we're also continuing to monitor parks usage to ensure that, uh, people are following social distancing protocols at the parks. So our park staff is taking, uh, daily AM and PM counts at the parks, and the police department is also doing passing checks. And, uh, we're generally, generally finding things are going well at the parks. Um, shifting to the hotel tax measure and the polling on that. So, uh, on March 16th, we had, uh, brought that forward for council's consideration and had planned on, um, going out for doing that polling on putting something on the ballot, uh, for November 2020 to increase the hotel tax from 12% to 14%. Um, we were going to time that based on kind of how things went with the shelter in place order that had just been announced. Uh, we have been sitting on that since, uh, you know, for the past six weeks. Um, we are, we have talked with our consultant who, who believes if, if we're ready to start polling on this, that it's a, it's a fine time to do so, that they're not seeing skewed results, um, due to the, the shelter in place order. Um, so we are planning to, to move forward, but I'd like to get council's, uh, confirmation of that, uh, later in the presentation, if there's any concerns with that. Uh, the community survey is actually complete. Uh, the report's being prepared, and we're planning to come to council, uh, on May 18th for a study session to, to talk about the results of the survey. And then our, the business assistance grants through the SMC Strong Fund, uh, the application period opened today. I know there were some problems with the website, and I believe they've, uh, pushed, pushed everything back to tomorrow, uh, but the city has made its $400,000 contribution, so our businesses are, uh, that money is available for them when, when the, uh, the website's back up and running. I want to talk a little bit about the 2019 strategic, uh, council strategic priorities. Um, we are, we have a couple priorities on track for June study sessions, and those are the safe gun storage and the banning of e-cigarettes and vaping. And the first step for those priorities, what were, was to, uh, consider ordinances similar to the county or, or neighboring cities. So what we're planning to bring back with that is, um, a comparison of, of what the county has done and what other cities have done, uh, to potentially mimic, uh, or replicate one of those ordinances. And then should council want to go further and be, be, uh, do something more restrictive, that would be on the, the agenda for the, uh, 2020, 21 council strategic priorities. Um, we do have a couple other priorities that are on track, but I'm looking to postpone the study sessions because they're not, uh, extremely time-sensitive items, and that would be the consolidation and prioritization of the infrastructure master plans and an update and next steps on the traffic action plans. Uh, particularly as it relates to the infrastructure master plans, uh, that's going to be a, a pretty extensive discussion that we were initially having to, uh, that we were initially, initially planning to do over two separate study sessions, um, because of the amount of information. And, uh, you know, given where we are and that we've been pushing out a lot of our nonessential, uh, study sessions, uh, I was planning on pushing this, these two out as well to a time when we're, uh, back to, to more normal, uh, operations so that we can have the, the dedicated discussions on these. And then finally, there is one priority that's not on track due to resource reprioritization, and that's electronic billboards. That's part of the revenue enhancements, um, priority, and that's an item that, uh, Sean and I have been working on, but, um, we've had to shelve that, uh, since the shelter in place order as, as we've had our attention on other things, and we're planning on picking that back up, um, you know, once the shelter is in place is, is no longer in place and we're sort of back to more normal operations. And finally, on the operations, I did want to highlight some of the great work our city staff and our volunteers are doing. Um, we have over 200 meals a week through our senior hot lunch delivery program, which is done by city staff and 27 cert volunteers. Uh, 470 San Mateo seniors are receiving wellness check calls. Um, our age-friendly city survey is happening via one-on-one calls in three different languages. We've got 26 folks participating in the shopping assistance for senior households program, uh, which is handled by city staff and 14 volunteers that are doing, uh, shopping and delivery. A hundred-plus PAL families are getting weekly pantry boxes, which is, um, you know, food that would support a, a family of, of four for about three to five days. And our virtual recreation and library site is now over 2,500 hits, uh, so far, uh, since, since it went under, uh, since it went, um, live. Uh, shifting to redeployment and business outreach, we've got 22 employees in redeployment, and we've got all of them assigned. Uh, one of the new opportunities includes the, uh, handling the mask noncompliance hotline, um, with code enforcement assistance. And really, we're looking to educate the businesses on, on what's required for them and, and making sure that they're complying and their customers are complying. We've also been able to ramp up our business outreach calls, so we've made, uh, 469 since, uh, or up through last Friday with 175 direct contacts. Uh, we've ramped it up because we've added members to the task force, and now we're up to eight folks that are making, uh, calls on behalf of the city to our businesses. And then Safe Streets, uh, we launched that last week with our social media campaign, and is, we're continuing on with that. We received our dynamic message boards today, and they'll be deployed this week. Um, we, we are looking into strategic traffic signal locations, um, that we, we can identify for pedestrian walk sign on automatic, so the, the walk sign would, would go on automatically without, without having to push the button. And our No Through Traffic pilot is underway. We actually, if you can see on the next slide, um, we rolled out Bay Meadows today, um, and that's, uh, putting the, the road closed to through traffic signage on, uh, 28th, on Kine and on the Derby Extension, and the image to the right is a, a photograph of that. And so that's, seems to have been well-received so far, and the neighborhood's been very supportive and been great with helping us on communication. We've also been working on, on other locations. Um, we've, uh, been working through the HOA representatives to try to expedite, uh, learning about the neighborhood's interest in these locations. And we identified, based on last week's discussion, we had been identified a location in, um, in North Shoreview and, and Shoreview, and the North Shoreview is, is listed as item five, and the Shoreview one is item, uh, or segment four. Um, you'll note that three of these segments are highlighted in green. Um, the, uh, the one that's in North Shoreview from Kingston to east of Rochester, number six, which is Hacienda, and number seven, which is 39th. Uh, communications with those HOI, HOA representatives have indicated that they're not interested in, in pursuing this at this time, and so right now, we're going to shift our focus back to, um, the segments two, three, and four. Um, and, um, we are planning and expecting to be, begin rolling out, uh, signage and physical barriers in about two weeks for those locations, and we'll continue to monitor, uh, Bay Meadows. So hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll have, uh, all four of the sites up and running. And finally, I'm looking to get council confirmation tonight of the actions I've taken in response to the emergency proclamation, which would be the continued adjustment to our operations and the deployment of our personnel, um, confirmation on the, um, moving forward with polling for the hotel tax measure for the 2020 ballot, and then, uh, confirmation on the status of the council priorities in terms of, um, postponing the study sessions and then, uh, being off track with the one particular item. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item? Are there any council members who have questions?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out how to raise my hand.
Go ahead, Rick.
Okay. Um, regarding the, uh, TOT, I think, uh, excuse me, Drew was looking for some feedback on that, and I actually feel like now is a good time to pursue that. Front page of the newspaper talked about the, uh, 7% structural deficit today, and I think we'd be irresponsible if we didn't go forward with trying to find some way to, uh, close some of that gap. So, um, I think we should, uh, move forward. Thanks.
You're, you're good with the polling, Rick?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Anybody else have questions at this point? I don't see any of the questions. Do we have any public com- oh, I do see a question.
Sorry.
Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Lee.
Uh, Drew, I was just hoping you could tell us a little bit more about the, if the, if our, if there's an explanation behind why he feels like COVID-19 would not, or our consultant would feels like COVID-19 is not going to impact the polling results? Was there, was there any more, um, you know, justification or reasons given to?
Yeah, he, he, he's got a lot of his clients are on hold with, with their surveys, but he has colleagues in the field that have indicated that they're not seeing skewed, that, that are continuing to move forward with their polling, and they're not seeing skewed results that, that you might expect to see during this time. So they don't feel like, um, we don't feel like we'll get bad results or, or, or different results as a function of the current environment if we, if we go ahead and survey.
Eric, do you have a question?
Nope.
Diane? Okay, then Patrice, if you can hear me, do we have any public comment?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I can hear you. Um, I have seen nobody on the phone on the Teams app. Uh, there's no input at the clerk@cityofsamatero.org email, and I'm refreshing the Speak Up San Mateo, and, uh, there are no, uh, feedbacks in that right now.
And I'm curious, do we have any public comment on any of the items on our agenda tonight?
Not so far.
Not so far. Okay. Um, then I'll bring it back to the coun- I'll close the public comment period on this item, bring it back to the council for, uh, any comments or a motion?
I'd just like to say, don't forget about those billboards when you have a chance. Other than that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Understood.
Okay. Before we, before we make a motion, um, Drew, that was an amazing presentation. Uh, it needs to be said, it, it has to be said that you're doing everything that we have asked you to do, and you're doing it incredibly well at a very high level. You're making all the right moves, and I'm extremely proud to have you as our city manager. Um, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm on board with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I, I would be remiss if I did not give the credit where credit is due, which is to, uh, department heads and, and their respective staffs. They're, they're doing the heavy lifting and, and making it all happen, so they're doing an amazing job.
You, you have an amazing staff, you are correct. And, uh, with that, uh, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the items that were on the last slide as it relates to confirming actions taken during this emergency time.
Second.
I second.
I heard a motion and three seconds, and so Madam Clerk?
This one goes to Lee.
Would you call roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mayor Gothols?
Yes. Thank you very much, Drew. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That passes unanimously. We're on to item number two, which we have a presentation from Kathy Kleinbaum. This is regarding the property at 40 Baywood Avenue.
All right, hold on. Let me try to share my screen. Are you seeing my screen?
We see it. Thank you very much. Looks good.
All right. Great. I'll proceed. Um, so, good evening. I am here. Oh, wait. You know what? I can't advance my slides, which is a problem. Let me try that again, sharing in a different way. All right. Are you seeing it now again?
We see you, your portrait.
You see me and not my, okay.
Now, now we see it.
And it's.
Now we see it. You're good.
I know. It's just trying to make sure it can let me actually move through the presentation. Okay. Here we go. So, um, in 2019, the city was approached by the owner of 40 Baywood, Ms. Lilienthal, who was interested in donating her property to the city along with an endowment to maintain it as part of her estate. Um, as a reminder, this property is a 3.2 acre site with a 7,000 square foot home and extensive grounds. It is quite uniquely located, um, it has two separately-ful parcels, one of which is in the town of Hillsborough and one is in San Mateo. The Hillsborough parcel contains the home, whereas the San Mateo parcel is the slightly larger parcel on this property. Um, it is a private residence, so renovations would be needed to the house and grounds in order to accommodate any public access. Additionally, the site doesn't have, you know, a tremendous amount of onsite parking, so that also would be another thing that would need to be accommodated for public access. Since this was last brought to the council in August 2019, there have been continued discussions with the donor, and staff is bringing this item back to council to discuss changes in the terms of the donation and to receive direction from council on next steps. So the most significant change, which we discussed tonight in the proposed terms to the donation, is that Ms. Lilienthal now wishes to leave her property jointly to the city of San Mateo and Hillsborough to co-manage. In addition, um, the role of the trustee, Ms. Lassan, in the property now will be an ongoing role in the management of the property. These significantly changed the terms of the donation that we discussed in August, and so this report will walk through in more detail those changes for council consideration. And the reason why we're bringing this back to council now is that the donor has given us a deadline of a roughly two-week period to make a decision if we're still interested in proceeding with the donation. So, starting off with the joint ownership with Hillsborough, the town of Hillsborough and the trustee have proposed that San Mateo and Hillsborough form a JPA or Joint Powers Authority to administer the property. Doing this will definitely present more administrative challenges and possible expenses than if we solely owned the property as initially proposed. For example, it does create the need to maintain a separate set of books for the financials and also to hold separate public meetings for discussions on this property. The cities would need to contribute to the JPA to share in the cost burden of the property and also determine the management structure and allowable uses of the site. The distribution of net operating expenses between each city would need to be negotiated, and there's no proposal yet for what that split might be. So in terms of the role of the trustee, the donor has indicated that the endowment for the property, which is currently estimated to be about $5 million, would not be provided directly to the cities or the JPA, but instead be managed by the trustee for the estate in perpetuity. The endowment would only be used for major capital expenses for the property and would not be available for ongoing operating expenses. When we had last brought this forward to council in August, staff had assumed that interest income from the endowment would be available to offset any operating costs to make the property cost-neutral to the city. So this, um, this assumption is no longer feasible. In addition, the trustee is proposing to make certain capital improvements to the property to meet their vision of future use prior to transferring it to the cities. And we would need to establish a mutually agreed-upon long-term facilities plan to ensure that the funds are available for high-priority projects into the future. In terms of the anticipated net operating expense, um, we never really expected that this property would really be able to generate enough revenue on its own to support itself. We were, again, assuming that the interest income from the endowment would help offset any operating expenses. So staff from both San Mateo and Hillsborough recently met to compare our estimates for operating costs and potential revenues for this property. We looked at various scenarios and iterations, and honestly, at this point, you're really just making best guess estimates based on operations of other similar properties. But really, the, the ultimate budget would determine, would depend on the programming of the property. So until we determine what that is, it's hard to make a really definitive guess of what it would be. But a common theme in all of our iterations was that there's an estimated operating deficit of at least 100,000 per year. Um, so, I mean, no one really expects parks to make money for cities. They're there as an amenity, and they do cost money to operate. So this deficit would require an ongoing commitment of funds from both cities to cover these operating costs. Um, Hillsborough has stated that they will try to create a foundation and solicit donations to help offset the operating costs for the property. However, at this time, we don't know how much money could be raised from those efforts. Um, in terms of the vision for how the site might be used, we have yet to determine what this proposed programming would be. Hillsborough has stated an interest in forming a committee with residents and adjacent neighbors from both cities to meet and decide on acceptable uses. We do think it will be challenging to develop a common vision for future use of the property, given the very different recreational needs of each city. In addition, there is a need to balance the interests of immediate neighbors with those of the broader community, especially if this property requires the ongoing commitment of city revenues. Um, so, I mean, public access to any property definitely inherently will create some neighborhood impacts. It depends on the level of the public access, but there would be expected to be some noise, traffic, and parking impacts. Um, and finally, it is unclear what role the trustee would play in determining the use of the site and what say that they would have in this process. And so, with all that said, we are seeking council direction on these proposed new terms of the donation. So, you know, we need to know whether the city is open to these new terms for the donation, and if we are open, what additional terms will we need to negotiate with Hillsborough and with the trustee and the donor in order to further proceed. So with that, I am open to any questions and would hand it back to council for further discussion. Thank you.
Can I start off, Kathy? So this is very different from what was originally proposed. What originally sounded like it was being proposed was, uh, the land for the purpose of, of, uh, maintaining it and using it for the city of San Mateo without, uh, without a trustee and with, I believe the original number I heard was eight to 10 million dollars. It, wasn't that going to be the original endowment for the maintenance?
Um, yes. So originally, the endowment was going to be $8 million. It has been reduced in part because of market losses during, due to our current financial situation and the state of the economy, and also in part because the trustee is planning to make some capital investments into the property before handing it over to the city.
Okay.
So a combination of those two.
Well, the way it was originally presented is very different. I was, I was pretty comfortable with it being donated to just the city of San Mateo and, and for us to maintain it with that money and not having a trustee, but this is a whole nother thing. Are there questions on this? Eric? Eric?
I think, yep, sorry. Um, Kathy, thank you for the presentation. I was just curious, um, in your meetings with, um, with the various representatives, um, from Ms. Lil- Lilienthal's estate, um, was there any indication of why the change of heart? Why, why she changed, uh, the, the terms or the initial proposal?
Um, you, when we first brought it to council back in August, Hillsborough, um, came to the meeting and showed up and expressed some interest in the property, and, um, Ms. Lilienthal, I think, had initially assumed that Hillsborough would not be interested in managing a, um, such a donation, and when she heard that they had interest in making sure the property was used appropriately and would become an asset to the community, she decided it would be in everyone's best interest to provide it to both cities jointly. And then the terms of the relationship with the trustee, I think that was something that we've discovered during further conversations with the donor. It may have been the intent all along, but was not our initial, um, understanding based from just very preliminary conversations.
Got it. And, um, it seems like I ask this often whenever we get estimates, but how confident are you on the, the operating, uh, estimates? It just seems to me like there's just so many assumptions there, and were there any kind of key assumptions that you had to make to come up with that number that, that you think we should know about?
Um, so, I'm not confident in the number. I'm confident in the magnitude. Uh, you know, we looked at a variety of scenarios with the city of Hillsborough, and in every scenario, there was an operating deficit. At the lowest, it was maybe 75,000, and the highest, it was up to 300,000, depending on our differing assumptions of whether there would be a live-in groundskeeper, but, you know, I think we can be comfortable with the order, order of magnitude that would be 100 to 200,000. It's, it's definitely not going to cover its own expense.
Great. Thank you.
Central Park, Bearsford, parks don't pay for themselves. That's not their intention.
Right. Thank you. Those are my questions.
I have a question. Kathy, do you have a, a sense from Hillsborough about their vision for programming?
Um, we did have some conversations with them. They definitely want to form a resident task force before committing to any vision, but they were thinking of the property very differently, I think. They were thinking of it more as, um, possibly a, a garden center, more, more limited in use to a smaller, um, number of people for kind of a different purpose. And I may call on Sheila to elaborate maybe further on this, but we initially had thought of this as really a venue for events, um, whether it be weddings or small conferences or nonprofit meetings. Um, I think they, they aren't necessarily opposed to that, but I think they have some more, um, of, of, more of a focus on daytime uses and maybe wanting to see a little bit less of the, um, evening uses for lower overall impact. Sheila, do you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, I would concur with Kathy in terms of that. I think, um, the other, um, the other thing that was expressed by Hillsborough was because they don't currently have any real parks in their city, um, that they would view this as really a, a town park for them, um, given the fact that they really don't have any other, um, common open space, um, that they consider, uh, parkland for Hillsborough.
Although they do have that Vista Park, which is a couple acres of an open park with equipment and stuff. Um, but in any event, um, it was a changed, um, situation. There's no question about that with Hillsborough coming in, so, um, uh, it's not what we took up in August. Not that you're looking for me to answer questions, but it was clearly different than when we had first, uh, brought it before the council, that's for sure. And I guess, question, uh, Rick, if I could, just one more question.
Yeah, sure.
Um, how? How would it work if there was the private management of the endowment? And how would it be determined, uh, how the endowment would cover a capital cost in the future?
So I think that is one of the elements that we're concerned about may raise some difficulties in the future. So, you know, if it is a third-party management of the endowment, then we would have to reach an agreement with the trustee of the endowment whenever a capital improvement was needed for the property. Um, and so we would need to make sure that all parties agree that this capital improvement was in the best interest and was needed at this point in time. So there's a little bit of control that the city would be ceding. So there's a little bit of control that the city would be ceding, um, to a trustee. And then if you have two cities and a trustee all having to negotiate that, it's, it just, it's always more difficult when there's more parties involved in any decision.
But I recall they were going to do a lot of upgrades. It's really what we're worried about is, you know, 20 years down the line. They had kind of planned to, um, do some ADA bathrooms and that kind of stuff ahead of time before turning the property over.
It sounded like they were going to use that endowment money to, to, uh, for those capital improvements too. So it would be, you'd be receiving less money for the, for the endowment.
That's right. That is correct.
So we definitely need to work with them on those improvements that they do ahead of time to make sure that they, are improvements that all parties find agreeable and beneficial to the property and that also we make sure that like ADA restrooms are done to a public standard, which may be different than a private standard.
Rick, did you have other questions?
Sure. You know, I just wanted to comment. I think it has changed substantially. Uh, in fact, the way I recall it, when I was there and led through by the, um, the lady who was the trustee, I guess, um, it sounded as though there was the eight million dollar endowment and they were going to do this other work. And those were separate issues, right? And what I think now is 3.24 acres is not big enough for both San Mateo and Hillsborough to be involved in trying to work all these issues out. It's, um, uh, not looking like it's going to pay for itself. The lack of sufficient parking for both cities to try and figure out things there. I think possible disagreements, uh, amongst the, uh, the neighborhood, uh, folks talking about what the uses should be. I think that we're two, we're two really different places. And at this point, um, I just don't think we can afford to take it on. And, uh, it sounds like unless they want to change the way they're doing it, it's no good for us anymore to me.
Thank you, Rick. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I see no call-ins in the queue on Microsoft Teams. And in the clerk at City of San Mateo email, there is no communication. And in Speak Up San Mateo, I'm refreshing the screen and there is no public comment.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I'll bring, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council and just kind of reiterate what I said before, which is that number one, um, it's really too bad because I really liked the proposal as it was originally formulated. And I thought that that could work really well for San Mateo and for residents of the entire region, including Burlingame, Hillsborough, and anyone else who would be able to use the park. Uh, in the current form, it sounds like Hillsborough is really excited to move forward. And if Hillsborough wants to take this on, then I wish them well. And I think that that's, that's good for them. So, uh, that's how I feel. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so I, I share your son of Vince, uh, mayor and council member, Brunea. Um, you know, after meeting with Ms. Lilinfall, uh, last year, when I met with then mayor Pappen, I left that meeting feeling so ecstatic. I mean, I felt that I had a comprehensive understanding of Ms. Lilinfall's, uh, priorities and wishes for the properties. And most importantly, I left feeling a hundred percent confident that City of San Mateo would be able to carry out those wishes. I mean, I, I, I knew that in my heart. And, uh, you know, when I first saw this report and I, and I heard through the grapevine, um, I was just so saddened to see this new proposal because I just think unfortunately it's not going to work. Um, it, it would prevent us from fulfilling Ms. Lilinfall's vision for that property. And I, and I don't think it makes sense for the City of San Mateo. Um, I personally would love the chance to, the opportunity to meet with Ms. 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 Lilinfall again, if that would be at all possible. And I just hope that she would consider at least going back to, um, the previous terms. Whatever, uh, whatever she decides to do ultimately, I agree with the mayor that, um, it's an amazing home. It's an amazing, uh, tea gra- tea gardens, amazing grounds. I just hope it remains open to the public because I know that that's what, uh, Ms. Lilinfall wanted. And, and she, that was the reason she reached out to San Mateo first. Um, and, and I, I, I just hope it, it stays open because I was really looking forward to taking my son and family just to see that amazing tea garden. So that's all.
And it should be said that she and her husband have already, above and beyond this home, have been so generous in their lifetimes. And what they have left in terms of a legacy for the public already is an incredible accomplishment. Um, and if they gave us the opportunity to do this too, it would be nice. Uh, it's not going to work with these current terms. Anyone else have comments?
I do.
Hey Diane.
Um, yeah, so I, I concur with the remarks that have come up so far. When I first heard about this, I thought it was an absolute amazing opportunity for our community. I think where it got kind of tricky for us is a different need for programming and then also a different size and city coffers. So I, I got concerned if down the line, more money was needed and the size of our coffers might be called upon and not in an equal fashion. So that's where I kind of got a little bit concerned. And then also the programming too, because I, I felt like council member Rodriguez, I, I thought this would be a great opportunity for kids to come. And it seemed like there was going to be more of a tempered use. And then the programming really couldn't, um, contribute as much as it should have to keeping the property going. So, um, um, it is unfortunate because how often do people come to you and say, I'd like to give you this beautiful property? Not very often. But as we know, the devil can often be in the details and it just may not work out for us. So I thank everybody for their time that they've spent on it. And, um, if there's an opportunity to go back to the original, then that would be super. But I just don't know that that's happening at this moment. And, and they did need an answer. So thank you all for the time that you've dedicated to it too. I really do appreciate it and staff has been just superb.
Definitely. Thank you, Kathy.
And, and I also just want to throw in, you know, um, Diane or council member Pappen, you, you took on this, uh, starting from last year as mayor and you've kind of been, being the point person on this. I appreciate all the time that you've put into this as well. So we're very lucky.
That's what I get the big bucks for. Come on.
Well said. Anyone else want to be heard?
Well, I'll chime in. I, I echo everything that was said so far, um, in terms of just having incredible gratitude for even consideration of the opportunity. And I think for me, getting stuck on, you know, in the details of, you know, how we define operational expenses, you know, how we cost this, what our program vision is and, and how decisions are made, um, are, are really, um, are really where the rubber meets the road and not knowing, um, those things and then being, you know, having to make a decision without full information is, um, is really, it's really hard. So I feel, you know, I, I, I honestly feel like this could be a windfall opportunity. And, you know, if there's, if there's interest or consensus among the council members to, you know, to give it a, you know, a last hurrah conversation and say, these are the, these are the specific questions. These are the things that we would want to know upfront, or these are the terms that we would feel comfortable with. Um, maybe there, maybe it is, it's worthwhile just to, to revisit a conversation, um, and not, not walk away before some of the, the information and decisions can be made with, you know, with some more conversation.
Well, I, I guess that's to you Kathy, that if they change their mind, if, if you get a phone call from them that they have a different proposal, we're always open to, to hearing it, but they needed a, a response from us with these terms this week. And I believe we've given it, but, um, council member Lee's point is a good one, which is if they came back to us with different, uh, terms, we'd be open to listening to that. But we, we respect that they very specifically asked us for a yes, no this week on their terms and, and that is what we will give them.
Okay. I can certainly communicate that back.
Okay. So do you need a motion at this time?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, I don't know that if I need a motion.
It's asking for direction.
Yeah, we were asking for direction. We've got that direction. So. Good. Thank you so much, Diane. Um, that's it for item number two. We'll move on to item number three, the planning application processing and public outreach during and after shelter in place order. And for this, I'm going to turn it over to our, uh, amazing CDD director, Kohar Kojian, so she can introduce, uh, some, some guy I've never heard of.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Gothills and council members, uh, Kohar Kojian, Community Development Director. I am honored to introduce you all to Erin Ackman, our new contract planning manager. Erin is, um, co-owner of Good City Company. I am so glad he has, um, willingly joined our team. Um, he comes with a lot of, um, planning and community development leadership and experience over two decades of which have been here, um, in the Bay Area. And so with that, I'll, um, turn it over to Erin to do the presentation.
Well, thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members. Excited to be giving a presentation to you here, albeit remotely. Let me put up the PowerPoint. Everyone can see that?
Yes.
Yes, Erin, we can. Thank you. Welcome.
All right. So tonight's presentation really is about two interrelated topics. The first is the status of the Community Development Department and the city accepting planning applications and building permits, um, as well as the status of the many different policy initiatives that the city has going on right now. And the second is what the community engagement process will be in light of the COVID reality that we're in right now. So a bit of background, um, I think everyone knows that it's a best practice to have strong recruitment, community engagement, really the best development proposals, the most effective, effective policy initiatives really are grounded in good, transparent community engagement. Secondly, and somewhat unique to San Mateo, this is actually prescribed in local law. Uh, local law adopted by resolution here says from everything from a large single-family home addition to your largest development project, you must have public outreach. And third really is about, we're in a new environment. We've done traditionally, community engagement in person. Uh, that's not going to be the, the reality for, uh, for a long period of time. And so the important thing to note though, is that the objectives related to community engagement will not change, but the tools will. So really what are those objectives? Um, the first is that the process must be inclusive for anything that you're doing, whether it's a development proposal or a policy initiative that the community is looking at. And inclusive meaning bringing people in from different neighborhoods, bringing people in from different backgrounds and making sure that everyone's voice is heard, casting a wide net. The second is that the process must be transparent. It's not just about throwing a PDF up on a website and allowing people to figure themselves, figure it out for themselves, but really explaining the reason that, uh, something is going forward and something is being considered. And all of this community engagement is so that we could build consensus, so we could understand the community's desires, their concerns, and bring those forth to the decision-makers to make a decision. And really Kohar, uh, myself and a lot of the planners from around the area have really recognized that, albeit, uh, difficult time, this is really an exciting time for planning because a lot of the community engagement measures that we have been talking about modernizing over the past decade really haven't been modernized. So this really is our chance to be able to cast a wide net, be more inclusive than ever, be more transparent than ever, and really build consensus and change the way that we do things for the long term, um, through the updates that we do now. So when we're talking about modernizing or, uh, updating our systems for community engagement, and San Mateo really falls into four buckets. The first is for minor planning applications. So there's requirements for single-family homeowners and small commercial projects to do outreach. Then there's major planning applications. So your projects like Peninsula Heights, Concar Passages, Concar Passage, um, that has specific requirements for community outreach. You have your focus code updates, so your mechanical parking lifts, your ADU, um, updates, things like that. And of course, your general plan, which is the most important policy, uh, initiative is currently underway. And there's specific requirements related to that. And, uh, go back to that slide. Uh, of course, there's different engagement tools will be used for different processes. Around the country, people are dealing with the same issues. The American Planning Association is putting out resources. Nearby cities are also developing strategies. We've even had a applicant put out some measures for hosting a remote meeting. So people are thinking about this issue. So our next steps in turn of our general plan update, uh, from a short-term standpoint, uh, we'll continue to work on policy cleanup items and we'll be bringing back, uh, develop, developing a revised general plan engagement strategy for the council. And next steps in terms of timing, right now, we're continuing to review and process existing building and planning permits that were, uh, already in-house prior to the shelter in place. We've also been issuing permits related to emergency work and for essential projects. So that's housing projects with 10% or more affordable housing. Beginning next Monday, we'll begin to accept a new building and planning applications of all types, just thanks to a lot of the front counter staff and, uh, our IT staff really developing the, the tools that we need to accept these remotely. And in the meantime, we'll, the planning staff and community development staff will be working with the city manager's office to put our new remote meeting protocols in place. And in late May and June, we'll then go back to the council, uh, for council consideration of our new general plan outreach strategy. So that concludes my presentation and I could, uh, take any questions at this time.
Great presentation. Thank you so much, Erin.
Any questions from council members?
Uh, well.
Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to welcome Erin, uh, happy to have you aboard here and, uh, looking forward to many great things we're going to be able to do going into the, uh, short-term and the long-term here in San Mateo. We have a lot, uh, on our list of, uh, action items. So thank you. Um, great presentation. I look forward to, uh, I understand our new, um, remote, uh, tool for, uh, uh, proposers to, uh, access planning, uh, is a great tool. I look forward to getting things, uh, moving so that, um, uh, you know, our economy will be able to be boosted by construction activity, a major economic driver. And I, um, feel like there's, uh, been enough delay. We have a lot of things to work on. Um, not that we need to rush everything out, but the general plan update process in particular, I want to make sure we pay very close attention to bringing all parties close together and making sure we're able to, you know, get consensus as we move through the process. So thank you. I look forward to help with all that.
Diane, did you have a question?
I do have a quick question. Um, so as it relates to existing planning applications, um, I mean, forgive me if I don't know this and I should, but it is that, uh, we're just doing that online right now, right? You ask people to make changes and then they come back to you, they make the changes, their reviews. Everything is just flowing online right now, right?
Correct. Everything's flowing online, doing Microsoft team meetings like this with applicants and, uh, just doing everything remotely.
Got it. Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
It's the future. It's the future. Uh, Patrice, uh, Madam Clerk, could I ask if we have any public comment on this? I'm not cutting off further questions. Uh, anybody can have more questions, but I wanted to check in and see if we have public comment on this item.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. We do not in the clerk inbox and we do not, I do not see any call-in numbers in the Microsoft's Teams account. And in Speak Up San Mateo, I'm refreshing, and there are no comments.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. If you've got any further questions or comments, feel free. Uh, Councilmember Lee.
I had a question about some of the input mechanisms that are already in place. So if there's a, a project that's already going forward, we already have a way for people to call in for, um, for feedback and then email in for feedback. Is that correct?
Correct. Um, there's ways they could contact a project planner via the phone or via the e- via email. There's also a lot of information that's available on our website as well. So, so those methods are already out there.
So we're really, we're, we're really trying to solve for the community meeting piece that's, that we're unable to do during COVID. Is that right?
That's right.
And, and is there, you know, is there a thought in terms of some of the systems that we're setting up and being able to carry them forward beyond COVID?
Yes, absolutely. I think that's, I think that's really the exciting part is the planning profession has done things one way for a long period of time. And this rule really forced us to take things into a new era. And there'll probably be some hybrid in the long run between traditional meetings and what we learned through this process.
Great. And so, so the message is that we're really elevating the process, um, from what it already is, um, where we is, where we do robust community outreach, and we already have a lot of opportunities and channels open for our community input.
That's right.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I just want, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to welcome Aaron. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
Me too. Welcome.
Thank you.
Here, here.
Oh, I don't know.
There's always a skeptic. Always. Okay, so that's everything. We don't need to vote on this either, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, you have received our comments. We think you're doing a great job. Continue onward and keep doing it. Thank you so much.
For now.
Yes, and keep posting those videos of new bicycle riders.
I will. I will.
Take care.
Thanks.
Moving on to our final item, which is number four, financial assistance for community childcare providers. Drew, do you want to tackle this one?
Yes.
Thank you, city manager.
Of course. Can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay. The item is the childcare provider financial assistance. And so just a little bit of background, last week, we were, we were asked, staff was asked to look as to whether we could utilize the childcare facilities fund for providing assistance to our childcare providers. I know Sean and his team looked into this closely for a couple of days last week to determine if they, if we could legally use these funds to provide assistance to childcare facilities. And it was determined due to mitigation fee act restrictions, there is no legal way to divert these funds that are restricted for capital only to use for childcare assistance. So once we determined that, we pivoted to what else could possibly be done to, and I'm sorry, are my slides advancing or not?
Yes.
They are? Okay.
Yes.
So we looked into what existing resources are available for childcare providers and for providers with two-plus employees. The Silicon Valley Community Foundation has a COVID-19 childcare program. It has a little bit of money for assistance for the tri-county area of San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Clara, but only about, with $100,000, it'd only be about 10 unrestricted grants available. But they're also providing technical assistance to provide information about how to access available funding sources for childcare. There's also the opportunity for these providers, if they, if they meet the other eligibility criteria for the San Mateo County Strong Fund through SMCDA, to compete for those, that grant funding as well. For our sole providers, the family childcare home-based programs, they also have access to the Silicon Valley Community Foundation COVID-19 childcare program. As sole providers, they are eligible for pandemic unemployment insurance. If they are a homeowner, there's a potential for the mortgage deferral. And then if they're rental, they would be eligible for the funds that we've earmarked to go, the CDBG funds that we've earmarked to go to Samaritan House to provide rental assistance. And we were not able to get the information for the city of San Mateo specifically, but we did learn that throughout the county, approximately 70% of the home-based childcare providers are renters. So then, funding options for council consideration would be to contribute funding to the Silicon Valley Community Foundation COVID-19 childcare program. So add to that $100,000. That would be unrestricted general funds, but it would be, we'd be able to earmark it for San Mateo providers only. The, the other option is the San Mateo Strong Fund. Now, I did communicate with them today, and we would not be able to earmark any of our $400,000 contribution. They're not able to accommodate that, so they would be competitive with other small businesses that are, that are, that are going to be applying for those funds. And then we could earmark a portion of the $440,000 that we're, that we're planning to provide to Samaritan House for rental assistance. And we do actually have additional CDBG funds available for allocation if the demand exists. And the only, we did talk to, Sandy Council talked to Samaritan House today about earmarking, and they were, they said they could accommodate earmarking the funds for childcare providers. Their only request was that, that we monitor the usage and that that earmark has a, has an end date to it, so that if the, if the other money is spent and all the earmarked money is not, that that earmarked money could be moved back into the general pot for general rental assistance. So with that, looking to get direction and discussion from council on which options, if any, do we want to move forward with, and if, if we're going to move forward with any, what funding amounts should be allocated.
Drew, can I ask a question up front, which is with regards to the rental assistance, those are just grants, correct? Those are not loans?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess I'm trying to ask a question about, we, providing these grants doesn't guarantee that the childcare facility will be able to open on the other side, whereas perhaps a loan that, that was some bridge funding might help them to open their doors on the other side. Is that fair?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if I could say definitively that a loan would be a better option than a grant. I think both, both pose some level of risk, as far as if they're not able to reopen, it's unlikely that that loan would be able to be paid back.
Questions from council members? I'm looking. I don't, I'll go, I'll go to public comment. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
So I just wanted to, to review again the landscape of the number of providers that we have, and I think it was in an email that we got from buildup, San Mateo County. So the number of provide, I think it's helpful in this conversation and for the, for the public who's watching, to just kind of get, get a little bit of an overview in terms of how many home-based we have, how many centers we have, how many we know are currently in operation.
Are you asking or telling us?
Oh, I was ask, I was asking.
Hang on, I'm going to need to.
Is that, is that the email from Padilla today? Ms. Padilla sent us that email? Is that where you're referring to, Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
And sorry, I'm going to have to go, go back and reference that. So let me pull that up. So it looks like it's 118 licensed small and large family childcare homes, as well as 58 licensed childcare centers. And that is, I believe, a countywide number.
No, I think that's the city of San Mateo.
Is that city?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're right. My apologies.
Okay. And then, and then do we have any more updates from our, our business task force outreach efforts in conversations with childcare providers and better understanding their needs?
I don't have an additional update on that at this point. I haven't touched base with Jennifer today on the specifics of the calls that they made over the past week.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions.
One quick question.
Yes, Councilmember Pappan.
How many of the 118 licensed small and large family childcare operations that are in homes, how many are those renters? Did you say 70%? Or was that a countywide figure?
That's a countywide number. We don't have that information for the city, but we felt like the countywide number is probably a decent proxy for what's happening in San Mateo.
I'll bet. Okay. That's what I was curious about, because we do have this opportunity for rent relief that other small businesses may not have, because they don't function in their home and it's not residential rent. So that's something I'm intrigued about, just as we go forward. I don't know how much we might want to earmark, but I'm intrigued about that option.
Nice. More questions from council members?
I have a question.
Rick, go ahead.
Sure. So I just reread the staff report, and under the part about the adoption of the existing childcare development impact fee, I note that while this could have been established for both residential and commercial construction to be assessed on, it was actually only determined to be assessed on commercial properties. And as such, at the time it was decided that that could only be used for tenant improvements or new construction. And I know this is a horrible time to talk about this, but, so there is no actual assessment on residential construction. And if we were to decide to impose, just, I'm just kicking ideas around, some small fee on residential construction, we could designate that for purposes such as funding, aiding existing childcare facilities? Is that correct? Could we do that?
I think I will jump in.
Go ahead, Sean.
On that one. So it's uncertain about whether we could impose a fee in, for sort of operations, ongoing operations of existing facilities. The, the fee is really, in the, in the, the model and paradigm of the impact fee is we're establishing what it costs the community, the broader community, to provide for facilities, childcare facilities, that is related to the new demand created by new development. And so it's actually adding capacity to deal with new development and charging that new development their portion of that additional capacity that's needed, as opposed to sort of meeting the existing need of whatever, you know, exists in the community and in terms of operational costs. So we thought about that, and I thought about that quite a bit. Don't have an answer for you in terms of whether we could come up with some sort of funding mechanism that begins, you know, to sound more like a special tax as opposed to an impact fee on new development. But it's something that if, if council is interested in doing that, you know, giving direction to staff, we can, we can look into that, you know, more closely. That money will then only come in, in the future as development occurs, right? So it won't be available to meet this existing need, but it's something that if the council is interested in either this, this whole different concept of funding operations or expanding the impact fee to residential, we could, we could pursue either one if the council is interested.
Sean, can I ask a question about the impact fee? Sorry to.
Sure.
Rick, if you don't mind. Go ahead. I want to stay on the impact fee for just a second. Is there, is there something that prevents us from reimbursing childcare centers in the city of San Mateo that have spent some capital costs for their, for their operations this year? If, if childcare facilities have spent and have receipts in the last year for capital costs for their operation, could we not use the impact fees to reimburse them for those costs?
So use it for the purposes for which the fee was collected, just use it sort of retroactively. I, I, I think that's something that we could look into. It seems like it's a legitimate purpose for the fee.
Okay. It just struck me just now, I'm sitting here, ideas happen, maybe we'll talk about that more and bring it back at some future day.
Thank you. I have another.
Go ahead, Rick.
Thanks. So Sean, so we know, we discussed, you said that building new commercial facilities creates impact and demand for childcare. Couldn't we also establish that building new residential does that too?
Sure. I think that's true. And, and it was just simply that in 2004, the council chose not to, and, and perhaps their concern was, when you look at all the, the fees on, that are imposed upon residential, another one would be sort of.
Yeah, and I kind of agree with that thinking. Just one more thing. So if.
While you're thinking about that, Rick, can I, can I go to the bullpen? We have, we have a relief pitcher warming up in the bullpen. She's coming out to the mound right now. Jennifer Chen, welcome to the meeting.
Hi. Sorry, I couldn't get on earlier. I, I just wanted, I heard part of what Councilmember Lee was asking, and I just wanted to re-ask her again before I answer. You had, Councilmember Lee, you had a question about the daycare center of Udena County?
Yes. I was, I was asking if we had any, if we could sort of give a quick overview of what was learned in your outreach efforts, and if you have any new updates, just as, just so the public can hear it in, in, you know, in this session, because it's now agendized.
Sure. We made 36 calls overall. Many of them have not been open, so we've left messages. Of the ones that we've been talking to, they have been applying for PPPs and IDAs. Many of them have not found funding yet. I think a lot of them have been on the good graces of the families for April, and have done a lot of online courses that families have been paying for. They are now more concerned about me. And that's what I've learned from our calls thus far.
Thank you.
Great.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council members before we go to public comment? And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We might have a public comment.
I'm going to let you think about that, and I'll get to you in just a minute. Rick, do you, do you have some private comment? Go ahead, Rick.
Well, I did recollect my thoughts, and the next question was regarding the fact that we're currently in an emergency environment. We've appointed the city manager to conduct special business. The county has enacted emergency measures. Is it possible that there's some way we could use and exercise a special police power to find some way to offer some of that money from the housing fund in order to serve this purpose?
So I think unfortunately, we are limited to, in terms of the use of those funds, by the, the state mitigation fee act, that we can only use them for the purposes for which they were collected. So there's, that's not something that has been, that particular provision of state law isn't something that has been relaxed by the governor or.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
I think I'm on the same point if I said that any, any childcare facility that had receipts for some capital improvement that they've done, if they wanted to submit $3,000, $4,000 to be reimbursed, that, that's something that we might want to explore. Drew, it's come to my attention from the comments that your slide didn't make it to the final slide. Could you pull up your presentation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just would.
Councilmember Pappan.
Yeah, just to follow along, thank you so much, along the same vein. I think what we're hearing from these questions by council is that this money is relatively unfriendly money at this point. So if we could do the retroactive to our city attorney, that, that would be a real help to some folks out there, I think. And it might be a way of our making this money a little friendlier.
Yeah, I think, you know, we could, again, we could take a look at that. There's nothing about it that immediately strikes me as being inappropriate or illegal if it is being used for, if the funds were being used for construction, like tenant improvements. So we'd have to look and see if we've got folks who have been affected by the, by the shutdown and who happened to have made some tenant improvements recently, that I think that's something we could look into.
Let me swing it back to Madam Clerk. Patrice, do we have public comments on this item?
I'm going to mention that there is nothing in the clerk email box, and there is nothing in Speak Up San Mateo on this item, but I do see a phoned-in number on the Teams chat, phone number ending in 4031. If you're intending, you're a public commenter, if you would like to unmute and provide your comment, now would be the time. And if you're not, you're someone I, just listening, that's fine, too.
Hi, this is David Fleishman, phone number 4031. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. All right. I'm David Fleishman. I'm the Executive Director for the Use of San Mateo County. First of all, I just want to say thank you for your ongoing leadership, the city of San Mateo and behalf of childrens and families. I know that you guys as a body, and actually each of you individually, really get it when it comes to the importance of childcare. In this case, it's an essential sector that's supporting the other essential sectors. And there are two broad sets of issues we're facing. One is supporting the emergency. One is supporting the emergency childcare that is available now, and the next is supporting all the providers who are closed so that when life begins to go towards something that's unnormalcy, we have childcare still available. And you all know how vulnerable childcare is, especially when it comes to economics. Right now, in answer to some, one of the specific questions about San Mateo, there are currently two centers in thirties from childcare that are providing emergency care. Forest Use is working on the COVID Task Force with our partners, the Childcare Partnership Council, First Five, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, County Office of Ed, where supervisors on helping to do a weekend to coordinate a response. And just briefly, and I'll stick around in case anyone wants to ask any questions, what Forest Use is currently doing is making referrals to all families who are looking for emergency childcare. We are doing provider support, so we are doing twice weekly updates on who's open, who wants to open, what are the barriers barriers to them opening, what the vacancy rates are, and the list of providers are available on our website. The vacancies will be available on our website, and we are coordinating with the county, as many of you know from the county manager's calls on Wednesday, when I do updates, to provide such information as we can. And there is a voucher program for families coming into place, and I know you guys right now are focused on supporting the providers. So as I said, I would stop now with a heartfelt appreciation for your leadership, and if anything else can be with the agency can be tonight to answer questions or going through to help, we are here.
Director Fleishman, thank you so much for all of your comments and for all of the work that you do. And I want to give kudos to Councilmember Lee for coordinating some action with some of the essential workers, especially grocery workers, who needed childcare and putting them in touch with the right resources. So thank you for that work and thank you to Councilmember Lee.
I wanted to follow up with a question if I could direct it to David. Are you still on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I think I think that it would be really helpful, if you don't mind, just sharing a little bit more about the making the business case for us in terms of why, you know, why this is important. I think that, you know, I think that we all share an understanding of how essential childcare is to our economic recovery. But I think that, you know, coming from you, somebody in the industry, and sharing a little bit more about in your expertise and what you're seeing in the field and what that could like, what 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 kind of picture we're painting in terms of the decision point for a city like ours to make this investment or not?
Well, let me just start with, and please direct me if my comments are not going in a helpful direction, I'm very open to, very open to guidance here.
We'll cut you off after forty-five minutes or so.
Please, please do. All right. So I think the place to start is the rules have changed. So only childcare-serving essential workers is even legal at this point. So the vast majority of childcare providers are now closed. In a survey that was done by perhaps any EYC, but a body of similar reputation, it was, the research showed that family childcare and a lot of childcare sites had about two weeks from closing until, two weeks of reserves, basically. So the vast majority of centers and family childcare homes that are open and are now, that were open and are now closed, are going to have a very tough time returning once the restrictions are lifted. In order to provide care now and mitigate risk, the, like I said, the rules have changed tremendously. Group sizes limited to ten of the same children. So kids cannot come in and out, there is no drop in care, there has to be a dedicated teacher that stays with that one group. So the already very difficult economics of operating childcare are even more difficult during during this crisis. And as, again, I don't want to tell you guys things you know because you have done such good work in this area, without childcare, in this case, essential workers are not to be able to get to work, but during regular life, most of the workforce is dependent upon childcare. In order to to be able to live and live and work in San Mateo County with two working families and the cost of living and and if I go on, I'll be telling you things you know. So the importance of being able to support childcare to stay open now, to support the essential workers that that we need is is self-evident. But down the road, when it's been months of closed centers and closed homes, people who are making really small margins to begin with, it's really unclear what the workforce is going to look like. And we know how much we depend on that for for our life in this county.
And there's also, there's an, tell me if I, if you're familiar with this, there's a nexus between childcare access and homelessness. Is that right?
I think there, I don't know what the nexus is exactly between childcare and homelessness, but childcare affects low-income families, perhaps most of all, because those are the ones that do depend on childcare in order to to do their work. And I'll tell you one, one story, because I'm an appeal, with our subsidy program, I hear the appeals, we have to terminate a family. And where, in the case where a family is over income, I have no discretion. So we had a terminated mother for being over income, and that was it. I heard from the childcare provider, someone who you all know, actually. And she called me up and said, David, have you heard it from this family? Because they're clients of yours and we don't know where they are. And I explained to her what had happened with her to the subsidy. About a week later, she called back and said that they located her, her and her daughter in the homeless shelter. The woman got a raise of a dollar an hour or more, literally, one dollar an hour. It put her over the income cap, there's no flexibility there, and the woman was then unable to work and ended up essentially homeless because of that. So that's not big data in terms of numbers, but that's a real-life example of what happens.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Okay, so we've closed the public comment period. We're back to the council for any final. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I think Christine, yeah, sorry, I believe Christine Padilla is on the call. Do you see her phone numbers? Because she was trying to call in and be available, and Michelle Seoson-Hyman also from Silicon Valley Community Foundation was trying to. She was more iffy. In terms of giving the money to Silicon Valley Community Foundation, that is the way to provide the most flexibility with the money while guaranteeing it stays earmarked for childcare in the city of San Mateo. And with that, I'm done. Thank you very much.
And through the mayor, this is the city clerk. We, I've been in contact via email with Christine Padilla. She just wanted to verify that you had received her letter, and I verified that. And I do not have any other phone numbers up on the system.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fleishman, Director Fleishman, for your comments. And thank you, everyone else. I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council for any final comments or direction. I think we've just scratched the surface on on this opportunity. I think we were thinking about it wrong last week when we thought trying to use the original impact fees for something other than what they were intended, but I think that if we are able to give those dollars to the same people for the purpose that it was collected, then I think it does a very similar service to them during this period of time. And it sounds completely legitimate and legal to me unless city attorney Sean Mason tells tells me different. And I certainly understand if you want more time to research this. Were there other comments from council members?
I have a comment. So no secret here, this is an important issue for me and I think for all of us. And, you know, I I really do see childcare as as an essential strategy and investment for our economic recovery. And when I think about it, I'm thinking about the parents that I know that are paying fees to their their childcare providers, even though they're unable to use them, they're usually contributing half or a third of the cost, which is barely keeping them alive and afloat, and and the possibility that all of those contributions could be sunk if they're unable to sustain, you know, in the next month or however much longer we're going to be in the shelter in place and that these businesses aren't unable to operate. I, you know, when I think about, you know, making the business case, this being childcare being the way that we keep businesses in business, and and really seeing seeing this as as an investment that will come back to our community and that will support especially women to, in a female-dominated sector, and particularly women reentering the workforce. So for me, this is, this is a really central issue that I would love to see our our city make a sizable contribution to. I, you know, I see, you know, given, given sort of the proportion of home-based care providers, you know, representing a hundred-plus businesses, knowing how how few of them remain in operation and that the Samaritan House is able to do that earmark, that is, that's a very, that's a great opportunity in terms, in the form of rental assistance. And I do think, you know, knowing cost of living in the city of San Mateo, rent is one of, if not the highest, highest expense and for for our working families. So I see that as as a natural fit, and so that would be where where I would like, you know, us to explore. Mayor Gotoz, I think that, you know, that idea of retroactive expenditures for capital projects is brilliant. I'm so glad you thought of that. And so that's, that's also an idea worth worth exploring. You know, I, you know, we've done, we've, in coordination with with some of the partners, we've done a huge push to the childcare centers to support them and build awareness about the Samcida, San Mateo Strong slash San Mateo Credit Union Fund and Grant Program. And so I do think that there will be a utilization of childcare providers for those designated grants, you know, although it will be in competition with other providers. And, you know, and I think that it is worthwhile keeping an eye on the on the fund. But for me, like, the the immediate decision is let's figure out how much we should earmark for for the Samaritan House contribution.
Okay, great. So let's, what are you thinking? We've got four hundred and some odd thousand that went to Samaritan House? What is that figure?
Four forty.
Four forty, okay. So what is everyone thinking as far as what they'd be comfortable with earmarking a certain percentage? I'm assuming people are on board with that. I guess I shouldn't jump the gun.
Yes.
Okay. So what do we think about percentage-wise? And and then the second question is, how long do you want to leave it available before it would go sort of in the general pool as Samaritan House has asked? Because I think they just don't want to see the money to keep sitting there, which is probably pretty reasonable.
What about, what about a quarter to a third?
Well, is there a certain amount that would go to each one, or is it going to be in ten thousand dollar blocks? Or are we just doing whatever somebody's rent is for a couple months?
I think it's the rental, the rental assistance is is based on their rent. It's not a lump sum like the ten thousand.
Got it. Okay.
So it could go, so that's the good news for us, right? Because it could go further. So so I think, you know, I was thinking in the same range, you know, a third to a quarter makes sense to me.
Do you want to make it around one hundred thousand? One hundred thousand dollars? Okay, Rick says one hundred and twenty. I'll go to one hundred and twenty. Do I hear one hundred and thirty? Hundred thirty, hundred, hundred forty? Hundred forty, hundred fifty?
Wait.
Hundred fifty? Two hundred in the back, I saw Sean raise his hand. Sean, Sean raised his hand.
Let me just, let me pose this, let me pose this. If, in fact, the hundred and twenty goes fast to childcare providers and there might be others, money that's still sitting there, maybe we do revisit it so we could ask Samaritan House to kind of report back to us and say, gee, you know, that hundred and twenty got gobbled up like nothing. And maybe we revisit it. How does that sound with kind of keeping our options open?
Yeah, I favor that. Yeah, and at the same time, if it doesn't get picked up for a month, then it goes back into the bucket. And and how about this? If we're able to get a program off the ground that reimburses childcare facilities for capital improvements that they've made, if we're able to get that program off the ground and fund them up to five thousand or up to ten thousand for whatever capital that they've spent over the last year, would you like to make it so that the people who have priority for those funds are people who maybe did not get the rental assistance funds to try to help everybody? Is that a priority people would be willing to to put on it?
I think it makes sense to disperse the support as much as possible.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully they are one in the same. I mean, usually your renter might not be doing that much improvements anyway, so it probably is a a different group.
Hmm.
I'd like to reach that different group if we can, certainly.
Yeah. So one, so one-third of four hundred and forty thousand is one hundred and forty-six And six, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
What's one twenty?
Rick said one hundred and twenty.
One twenty, a four forty.
Rick said one hundred and twenty, you're at one hundred and forty. Do I hear one hundred and thirty?
I'm fine with that. Twenty.
One twenty, one twenty, one twenty, one twenty, one twenty. Gone, gone, gone. How about one twenty?
Sure.
One twenty. Thank you so much.
One twenty is actually twenty-seven percent, so that's in between the twenty-five and the thirty-three. So you did it just right.
Rick, you're a math wizard.
Okay. That sounds super.
We enjoy doing God's work right here. We're doing the best we can for our residents who need it, and I appreciate that. Sean, if you have something you want to say?
So I, I will, I'm reasonably confident this is something we can do in terms of the use of the fees retroactively. I just one clarifying point, and I will continue to look into that and make sure that it's okay and let you know if there's any problem with that. One of the, one point, though, is that it's use of, the capital projects are sort of increasing capacity, if not to sort of adding a, something to an existing facility, but it's increasing, creating a new facility is the limitation, so.
Creating a new facility or expanding the facility?
Expanding the facility, that's right.
It could even be expanding the outdoor space that they had, yes? I would think if that increased the number of students.
If that increases the number of students, right, 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 right. That's the, that's the key, I think.
You understand our goal here is to make it as broad as possible?
I should do.
Okay.
And more user-friendly. It seems like it's been sitting there because it hasn't been particularly user-friendly. And so we'd really, if we're making this a priority, this is a great start.
Drew, have we given you enough direction?
Yeah, I just want to get clarification on on one thing. So one hundred and twenty thousand earmarked for rental assistance, specific to home childcare providers. And then what I was gonna, yes. And then what I was going to to recommend is that if we can, we can try to work with Samaritan House to not necessarily put an end date on that, on those funds, but instead just work with them to monitor funds being spent out of both the earmarked and the non- earmarked, just to monitor it and see, see how it's going, and then we can adjust as necessary going forward.
That sounds great.
Great.
All right. I'm going to close the the last. All right. I'm going to close the, the last item, which was number four. And we're on to reports and announcements.
I have something that's actually related to what we just finished. I received at 4 o'clock, and this is regarding the San Mateo Strong Grants for small businesses in San Mateo that we gave contributed money for. Lou Cohen, the proprietor at the B Street Bookstore, sent to me a communication saying that the grant was denied for him and for Three Bs because they are sole proprietors. So he says, if you're a corporation, I guess you're fine. But they were denied because they are sole proprietor, which I think is the definition of a small business in downtown San Mateo, isn't it?
I heard the same thing for Vespucci also.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that was our intent there. And maybe we need to find out what's going on over at San Mateo Credit Union with how they're administering this.
Sorry, I was just going to say that I also got similar complaints. And I sent an email to SAMCDA directly asking them if that was the intent. Because the FAQ did not specifically say no sole proprietors. However, they did say companies of two people. And it was just a bit of a confusion, I wonder. So I did already ask John Cecil of SAMCDA, sent him an email about that. I don't know that was the intent.
I thought that it was, it wasn't, it was two full-time equivalent employees. That's not the same as having a partnership or an LLC. They didn't specify in the eligibility criteria any, any legal designation requirement for the company.
But Three Bs has five employees.
Right. So they, all of these businesses met the two FTE requirements. That's very concerning.
I don't think we have enough information tonight, but it definitely sounds like something that we want to monitor and hear back on next week. And hopefully there's been some resolution of some of these issues. Because I think what we're hearing is there was, there was a definite intent for businesses like these to be eligible.
Definitely.
So we'll, I look forward to hearing back about that next week. Other reports and announcements?
Well, can, sorry, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely not. Go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, I, I guess I'm just worried about, you know, the money is, it's first come, first served, right? And so how, how reactive can we be to support, to support our businesses at this moment, given that the money is being committed and spent? And, and that we don't, at this point, have a clear sense of what the, what the eligibility criteria is and that, that has been miscommunicated.
I, I think we're doing it. I think Jennifer already made the call. We're talking about it right now. We want to hear back next week. And, and just as an analogy, on the federal level, a lot of that money went out to publicly traded corporations and, and corporations with hundreds and thousands of employees. And those people have actually given the money back because people went in to say that that was not the original intent. So nothing is set in stone exactly, but we should monitor this very closely. Drew, do you want to follow up on that or agree, disagree?
Yes, we will follow up and, and find out. I mean, the question is, is do, do we want? If, if they come back and say, well, no, if, if your legal entity is a sole proprietorship, you're not eligible. I know that's inconsistent with, with the criteria that we've seen. But if they were to come back with that answer, would we reconsider our 400,000? Do I need to tell them to just hold until we can get an answer on this?
Do you guys want to give direction on that right now?
I think so. Yes.
At least for the money we earmarked.
Yes.
Yep. That would be our response. You might want to pass that along like right now.
They're sort of making a distinction without a distinction, and it does certainly go against the intent of the money. So yes, put it on hold if we don't get the answer we like.
I will, I will email Roseanne tonight and ask for clarification on the criteria and, and ask that, that the 400 be held until we get a, a decision on that. Now, similarly, if she comes back and says, no, that was, that was miscommunication. Sole proprietors are fine as long as they meet the other criteria, I assume we're okay to release that funding.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, 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 yes.
And that submitted applications will be, and that have been rejected, will be reconsidered.
Also, I want to bring up today, there seem to be a lot of glitches in the application. I got several communications from people saying they were on, they were filling it out, they got dropped, and then they couldn't get back on. It was a big software issue. I think the website might have been overloaded. You might want to let her know that because.
They're aware. They, they've shut down till tomorrow at noon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's a first-come, first-served basis, people that were actually going first probably didn't make it. So I think that, or possibly didn't make it. It kind of skews the whole idea of first-come, first-served because some other people that got on later got through before others. I think it's uncertain. We should probably start over at noon tomorrow.
I, I'm going to leave that to the administrators.
And send our appreciation as well and gratitude.
Yeah, say thanks, but we see a little flaw in the process there.
Eric, did you want to mention something, please?
Oh, yes. So over the, this past week, like all of you, I'm sure, have received tons of emails from concerned residents who are concerned with the comments that, that Mayor Gotoz made in our last meeting and to the, the Journal, suggesting that our community should not place the Measure P extension on the ballot this year. And many of these residents are now afraid that members of this council could move to somehow prevent the measure from being placed on the ballot in 2020. I wanted to propose as a gesture of good faith that we not wait until the very last minute to fulfill our legal obligation and place the measure on the ballot at our next regular meeting. This act would not and should not be seen in any way as an endorsement of the measure. But there will be plenty of time in the coming months to debate whether or not the Measure P extension is best for San Mateo. However, I think it is not the, the best time right now to be discussing whether or not the measure will be or should be placed on the ballot. The petitioners have done everything that the city chartered required of them. Not only does the law require that we place it on the ballot, but is the right thing to do regardless of where individual council members stand on the issue. So I wanted to throw that out there.
I think that's all correct. I think that, I think you accurately recited what took place last week with, with my phone calls to SMURG after I received a letter from, from SMUHA asking if they wanted to defer since we were delaying the general plan process, if they wanted to delay their measure being on the ballot. And it, it is entirely up to them whether to delay it or not. I think that what we have heard clearly in the emails that you referenced from SMURG is that they want their ballot measure on the ballot this year. Any thought that I had that they might reconsider? I certainly have been dissuaded of that notion. So it, it really doesn't matter what meeting between now, and we have to put it on no later than the second meeting of July. We only have one meeting in July, which is on July 20th. That would be our, the last possible meeting to put it on. So any meeting between now and July 20th, you are correct, this is a ministerial duty that we have to perform. Correct, Sean?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, I guess my feeling before, I didn't feel strongly one way or the other. But given the, the divisive nature of this issue, and again, the issue is not whether or not this is best for San Mateo, but it's whether or not it's going to be on the ballot. I don't see any advantage of waiting.
Have you heard clearly from them that they have no interest in waiting, and I don't know who "them" is?
Right. I, I don't know who "them" is either, but I've heard a pretty loud and clear that there is no interest in, in waiting. But I don't know.
I agree with that.
It's not like one person to talk to with them. So I, I, I think it's the right thing to do here, to put this matter to rest and, and focus at the, the challenges that we're, we're discussing right now, that, the important challenges, so.
I totally agree. I, I was actually planning a, a town hall on Wednesday for the purpose of saying exactly that, for, for clearing up any of the disinformation out there that, that we as a council can somehow prevent it from being on, but instead letting them know that it would be on the ballot in November and that we don't have the jurisdiction to keep it from being on the ballot. So I will still try to communicate with individuals one-on-one and, and to the extent that there are individuals interested in a town hall this Wednesday, I will be giving them that, that same message that you just recited, Eric. Other council members have an opinion about what meeting we add this on for?
So, so before the, the conversation along that goes a little any further, I, I do, the Elections Code gets very technical about when you have to do, how to take certain actions like calling elections. You have to do that also in connection with some other actions like passing a resolution, asking for consolidation of the election with the county election. So there, there, I, I definitely know that there is a, a deadline by which it has to happen. I'm currently looking into whether there's a, a date that's too early. And so I, I had no problem with working with the council direction to put it on as early as possible and meet all those legal requirements, if that's a direction from council. It, it may be that next week is that, is that date. But I just want to make sure we get to the, I, I work all those things out before we.
Sean, are there official proponents, signature gatherers who control whether it goes on the ballot or not?
Yes. The, the statute says that the proponents may withdraw it. And the proponents are the peoples whose name were on the measure that was submitted to the clerk. There were three or four names that I can't recall specifically who they were, but there are three or four names listed as the proponent to that measure.
Unless there's an objection, Sean, I'd ask you to figure out what date we can put it on and let us know that next week. And Eric, just because we didn't know who "them" was, I'll make sure that those three people on the, on the ballot that signed it, that I am at least in contact with them, that I'm agreeing with their wishes.
That's great. Thank you.
And I think it's worth reiterating that the council has in no way taken any action to, to, to remove the measure from the ballot. And I think that that's been, that's, that's been a misunderstanding in the community that there, there is no effort underway to remove a ballot, Measure P from the ballot. And that where it stands today, that the, the council's direction is that it is validated and on the ballot.
Technically, not on the ballot at this moment in time, but the question is, is the council adverse to doing its ministerial act of putting it on the ballot? I, I don't, I myself am not adverse to that ministerial move. I just don't know if we could do it earlier. I think there has been some disinformation out there for whatever it's worth. I know my email box blew up. And so if, if that's something that shows that it's not being contemplated, at least then that's what it's about. It's not being contemplated. We can move on to other matters. I mean, I just.
I think everybody hears from this conversation that we're going to fulfill our ministerial duty and put it on. The only question last week was, do those proponents still want it on this year based on all the other things happening in the world and happening in San Mateo? That answer has, has sort of come. I haven't received a, a call back from the voicemails that I left, but I think the emails speak for themselves.
I just want to add that I did receive 67 emails regarding this.
That's it, Rick?
A few of the people wrote more than once. But it was never in my mind anybody's intention to try to take it off the ballot, okay? There was some misunderstanding, and for that, I apologize if I was part of that. But I think that we're not resisting going forward with what we're legally bound to do.
Yeah, one last comment. You know, this is, this is a political arena, and there's going to be disinformation out there, there's going to be misunderstandings. And, and that is why I just think it would be just a, the smart gesture to put this behind us. If we, if we're all agreeing that we got to do it anyway, and that there's no other, there's no other road, then let's just get it over with as soon as possible and, and move on and start discussing its merits, not whether or not it should be on, so.
Democracy is alive and well.
Okay.
I don't have a report.
I'm looking for Drew.
Yes.
Drew, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Drew, is there anything else that you would like me to talk about? No.
Can you ask me that question?
Is, is Councilmember Pappin out there? Councilmember Pappin, is there anything else you'd like me to talk about?
Which Councilmember Pappin?
Thank you, Mayor. All good.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it. Good meeting, everybody. Be safe. Take care.
Good night. Thank you.
Night.